Okay, we're going to call the meeting to order. Everybody can stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with equal rights and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Aubrey, could you call the roll?
Sure. Mrs. Aubrey is here. Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Jay Murray? Mr. Strobel?
Here.
Mr. B. Scott? Mrs. Leary?
Here.
And Solisson?
Here.
And that makes five of us. We do have a quorum. Okay, so procedures for public participation are printed up there on the side there. We're using our new board docs presentation, so if you get lost at any point, you should be able to follow along up there. Are there any presentations by the public on the agenda items for the special voting Seeing none, we'll move right into the one item we have on that under Finance. Okay, so do we have a motion so we can -- we have to have a motion to vote before we can discuss?
Make the motion 2A.
Yes. I have a second.
Thank you. Sorry, you said items 1, 2, A?
Oh, the special voting meeting is just 2A. That's all right. So same motion for 2A, sir?
Yes.
And same second.
All right. And now I would like Ms. Haynes to give us a little bit of background why. We did do a resolution the last voting meeting. I just want it to be made clear why we're doing this all again, so if I could have Ms. Haynes. Oh, yes, I apologize.
What are we voting? Modify to -- modify the -- On my budget.
Oh. Does that item, that PDF open up?
It opens up.
Yeah, it does, after this.
And the page. The attachment is the entire general fund budget.
I see.
It's the actual, the all the pages that are already what you signed.
Right.
And we're doing this because it was discovered that it wasn't advertised in the paper for the amount of time that it needed to be if we were going to be taking referendum exceptions. However, that brings me onto my next discussion, is that I was able -- the budget is always a work in progress. We're really early on right now. And as things come in, I update the budget, if I have them in the next voting meeting, or the next budget workshop, we'll discuss all the changes that I do as I go through them. Like, for instance, the BCTC numbers came in. The budget number came in, we were able to reduce the budget by like $250,000. The trust said that the not to exceed was 5.5 for benefits. I had it between 8 and 10, so I was able to reduce that down to 5.10, that's another $149,000. And on top of that, we also had the budget numbers come in for BEF and Special A. All right, so making all those changes, I was able to go back and have the 3.4 percent increase, which is the allowable. Instead of going to the exceptions, the exceptions would be the Special A exception is worth $889,726, the retirement exception is $143,499. Total exceptions would be $1,033,225, which would be another mill on top of that. So the mill that we're already, just over a mill we're able to get with the allowable, I feel is enough. That is my recommendation. Of course, it's your decision, your voting, but I feel like we can keep the budget within the constraints of the Act 1 index and not file the exceptions.
So let me ask one question, and then --
Sure.
What is BEF?
Oh, Basic End Funding.
Okay.
Exactly, I'm sorry, I should spell it out, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
It's the Basic End Funding from the state.
I know, we live in the land of acronyms, and sometimes I get a little lost.
It's the square.
No, I understand. I understand. And so then, when did the notice actually go to the Reading Eagle?
For the last time?
Yeah, the one that --
Oh, it was Monday, last Monday.
And so --
Yeah, it was Monday I got that.
So if we vote today, we have enough time. So now that --
This doesn't close anything for you.
Fair. So what we had voted on before was to go up to the -- to go with exceptions. What we're saying now is that with looking at more numbers coming in for what next year's budget would look like, if we voted again on this, we would be voting on -- without exceptions, so we would be taking the resolution for, we would be able to meet our obligations by not having to have that extra cushion of taking the exceptions, correct?
Absolutely.
Anybody else have any questions about that before we vote?
Again, this is just to give us that case of --
It's still not saying that we --
We don't need the extra in case of, we're okay with just the --
But we're also not saying that we are firmly going to raise to that limit. We're just setting the limit a little lower. We would, if we vote yes. Were there any other questions anybody had before we vote? Ms. Aubrey?
So we'll do a roll call vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
It would be the modified, the motion is to --
The motion is?
The motion is to modify what's on the agenda based on the discussion to go just to the actual index of 3.4.
You've already made a motion, right?
So you kind of have to --
We have to revise it, yeah.
You have to revise the motion, and everyone has to agree to it.
Okay. So I'll go back to Mr. Strobel. Would you be willing to make the motion with the revision?
I would make the revision, we're going to modify, fix number and modify, so we don't have to use the extra pop-up.
Okay.
So the new expenditure is $61,070,93.
And what is the new top level of millage that we would be -- I think we have to include that in the motion.
The top? Would be the mill increase to the allowable 3.4 percent in the Act 1 would be $32.657.
So do you agree --
31.584, but it's 32.6 -- 31. 32.6578 would be the new millage, give it like all the way to the -- Right, and current means 31.58.
Is that was four, and we could go for the exceptions?
Yeah, it included the number of 33 point something in the resolution, so. Do you agree to that change with that new millage? Do you agree to that, because you seconded the first time?
I sure am.
Okay, so let's try.
Okay, so now I'm going to try to vote again for the new one.
Let's try doing a vote again. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Ms. Leary?
Yes.
Yes.
Myself, yes.
So 5-0?
Five.
Motion passes? All right. And do we have any public presentations on issues for the special voting meeting? I have motion to adjourn. I'll second. Now we'll move on to the committee of the whole. As soon as I manage to find it, and there you go. Do I have to gavel in again? All right, call to order again? Take roll again?
Yes.
We need to take roll again, I'm sorry.
Okay, let's take --
I don't need to do the pledge yet, though.
Okay. Ms. Aubrey, here. Mr. Strobel?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Here.
Mr. B. Scott? Mr. Jay Murray?
Good?
Yeah.
5-0, okay. Five members, we have a quorum. Again, public participation procedures are printed up on the board, and there also is a copy in the back of the room, if anybody needs it. Are there any agenda edits? I didn't have any.
You would make them in the -- when you're reporting out on the committee, because that just happened, and bring them in front of the board, because it was nothing. You would have to discuss them again, because it was important. Correct.
Okay. Yeah, we had a few committee meetings beforehand, and so those agenda edits will be brought up when we get to the committee reports. So with no other agenda edits, there will be an executive session following the meeting to discuss personnel. Do we have any public comment at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Yes, Madam President, I have one item I would like to request of the board, a one-time exception to policy number 202, which is eligibility of non-resident students. We have a high school senior student who moved from the district on the 16th of January -- this is past January, and has been attending district schools since kindergarten. And the policy states that that student can continue tuition-free for 60 days. However, I'm asking for a one-time exception that would allow for the student to remain and be able to graduate with their current class through the end of the school year. That 60 days would, when I count it on the calendar, would take till April 20th, so you're looking at approximately six to seven weeks additional for them to attend on a tuition-free status. I'm asking the board to grant that request.
I honestly don't see an issue with adding that as a voting item to the board voting meeting at the end of the month. If no one objects, it'll still be within the 60 days, so we'll have an answer. Thank you, everybody. Do you have anything else for your report, or that was it?
That concludes my report.
All right. Any public comment? Okay. Moving on to Finance. Does anybody have any comments on any of the items under Finance? The only thing I wanted to ask is if Mr. Miller wanted to speak to number 47, unless you would like to discuss that when you get to your Finance Committee report.
We can do it now. We had a proposal, it's a proposal for Maple Springs Swimming Association for us to support them going forward with tax exemption. They've recently moved to a 501(c) enable, and they're going to go forward, try and do that, tax exemption. They just want a letter from us saying that we're not going to contest it, and decided that we won't. The MVAC has had the same status for a number of years now, and apparently the association is struggling. Even if they got a tax exemption, they could have trouble making the -- We've agreed, that's the term that we intend to use to move forward, putting a letter that we're not going to contest when going through tax exemption.
Yeah, and I think that the attachment that's listed is their letter to us, correct? Okay. All right, I just wanted to make that a little clearer. Any other discussion on any other items under Finance? Any public comment on any of the Finance items? Seeing none, move on to Programs. Got summer band and the German-American exchange, that was discussed, I think, on CNI last month with Mr. Spores. Does anybody have any comments on either of those things? Okay, seeing none. Do we have any public comments on any of the items under Programs? Okay, moving on. Secretary's correspondence. Do we have any?
We don't.
Excellent. Do we have a BCIU board report? I don't know if we do.
We do, yeah.
We do, okay, excellent, excellent.
Attended the monthly, the meeting, it was actually Board Appreciation Month, and BCIU Student Artwork Showcase. They had a nice showcase of the artwork before the meeting. All the schools from Brooks County were represented. Then they went through and seated three new members, which I was the new member, one of the three seated, replacing Mr. Rappgab. The general fund budget was approved, and I think we've seen a copy of it, and basically the good news is that our contribution is staying the same. The contribution for all the school districts basically is staying the same. It's actually a surprise how little of their funding comes from school districts. They get most of their money from grants. Staying the same are our fees for this year. There were a couple other relative items. Let's see, they ratified an agreement with the American Institutes for Research for ARR to conduct a full-day kindergarten study in Pennsylvania, which will be interesting to see what the, as far as impacts and the effects of a full-day kindergarten. Interesting to see what comes of that study. They also, one of the other items was they authorized agreements for Daniel Boone and Ole for the BCIU to provide independent campus standard support services. And then one last item noted at the very beginning of the meeting, they also honored special recognition for Timothy Heffner, who was president of BCIU from 2006 to 2019 in his entirety, a long-time school board president, also of contributions to the -- So I'll head to the --
Thank you, Mr. Miller. For the, next is BCTC. I don't know who our rep is for that. Might be Mr. Scott?
I think it is, yeah.
Yeah, okay. If he had anything, he can present it to us later this month. Student board reps, not right, we don't have them here today. Legislative report?
And my first meeting tomorrow.
Okay. I don't believe, are there any other reports right now? No, I don't think there are. Any public comments on any of those reports? Moving on to seven, Personnel. All one thing under Personnel, any comment on that? Any -- Under, so we have One Retirement, Several Leaves, Appointments, anything under A through C. I didn't see that there was more. Any public comment on anything under Personnel? Okay, moving on to number eight, Headcount Statistics. Any issues? Any questions? Any public comment? Moving on to number nine, Curriculum Instruction Committee Report from last meeting. Anything? Okay. Well, the one thing was added to the, just the one thing that was added to this was the German, the exchange student program?
Yes.
Yeah, that was the one thing that was added, okay. When's your next meeting? Two weeks?
20.
Yeah. Yeah, what date is that? Is that the 27th? Thank you. Any public comments on curriculum instruction? Extracurricular?
Yes, we just had a meeting, we had been sitting for a while, but we just met earlier today, and had a pretty full agenda for our half-hour meeting. Went through, talked to winter sports, we got a winter sports update, and our bowling team, swimmers and wrestlers are still continuing on, are doing very well, expected to continue into advanced states, basketball and other sports have wrapped up. We talked about the baseball field update, as much of you are aware, the baseball team cannot use the leash field this year. We're moving forward with having them use the high school field here, and the temporary fence is in order. Looking at options for a scoreboard, and I believe there's a new scoreboard out of Boiter Town that we're looking to use at the minimum cost. So it will be less, at the last meeting we had approved $5,500 for the baseball team this spring, and up to $5,500, which looks like we would be well prepared at. We also talked about budgeting for the softball field, replacing that fence. Softball field has a very old fence, and it's dangerous, it's not a snow fence, there's some metal poles involved, and we're going to look to move forward with having that fence replaced, because it's going to be a budget I can come forward with, it's a request for this year. There's a proposal to look at exploring bringing onboard a strength coach. We had talked about having a strength coach, and it would be someone that would assist with not only strength training, but also nutrition. And the idea that's just brought forward, it's going to be researched more, we just thought that it would be a 10-month position, stagnant position, that would go forward, would get people, more people involved, we would use in weights and working out, making sure that the weight room isn't only for the football team, that is for all the students, and also help people to learn how to train the way of the season. Talked about the turf replacement. Studies being done on our district turf field to see if it can last one more year. At this point, it's budgeted to be replaced two years from now. It is unclear as to whether it's going to be safe to be used this year. There is a study that's being performed, and we will find out whether we have to take adjustments to bring that forward. Talked about the golfing team, there is a proposal being explored for using the Reading Country Club instead of Arrowhead, that's something that's being pursued and looked at, there are options. The Reading Country Club actually has a driving range, which is a big advantage, and it's an 18-hole course, and it's a good area for finances. So that's something else that's being researched. A budgeted item for next year is a huddle recording system for video. At this point, some of the teams are budgeting for that individually, but need to budget for that as an overall system, and have it available for all teams to be used. One of the items is there would be a camera in the gym that could be used to broadcast any event that we had, whether it be any type of band, sporting event, whatever's going on in there, it could be linked into that industry market, and our technology versus left, and as long as we're compatible with our technology system, we'd be able to broadcast app live for anything going on there. Last item, one of the items I've been pushing, we actually won a softball championship in 2018, and never got the banner, but apparently it has finally been ordered, and we'll ride for the tournament. That's really everything else.
Mr. Miller has made it his mission to make sure that we get all the banners that we are owed, and I appreciate his diligence on that. Can I ask, have you decided if you're going to have an extracurricular meeting in March? Okay, so it will be at 5:30 on March 9th. It's not, there's no fire drill, I don't know what's going on. So.
Yes.
So, okay, so any public comments on extracurricular? So Facilities and Transportation meeting just met right before this. Mr. Strobel?
The golf has moved, it's about 98 percent complete. There's only a couple key jobs that are kind of threatened as being active. The high school paving update, the art paint will be completed very soon, it's almost completed now by Mayor and Mary. And the additional paving, we're going to get for the -- Additional paving for district office, kids will come with them without the school, depending whether or not it's actually going to be needed for that or not. So the kid should be ready by March, by the beginning of March, is the plan. The high school courtyard project is ready to start, and it's hopefully going to be completed by the end of spring by solid rock landscaping. They also donated a fair amount of project. They're just waiting for the weather to turn, so it's going to start. The annex weight room doors, in honor of Mr. Scott, we need two new doors.
Mr. Jay Scott.
Mr. Jay Scott, hey. We needed to, there's an immediate need for them, there's a safety problem, so that's going to be something I'd like to add for our voting meeting coming up.
For next voting meeting?
Cost will not exceed $13,385. It's already has bids on it, trade to go, and there's a need there for a door to put up, so there's equipment in there, somebody could get hurt. The annex gym doors need to be replaced, but we're going to have to move that one down the lane for a while, it's not an immediate need right now. We also want to add to our voting committees for the co-stars of leisure and playgrounds equipment inspection, it should be done annually, and so there's a need, and that would be $3,069, but that would be an inspection of all, of all buildings that we school --
All the buildings that we own, or all the ones we have students in?
All the ones that we have students in.
Okay.
And so --
Playground inspection?
Playground and features, and all playground equipment throughout the district.
Oh, all playground equipment throughout the district? Okay.
Make sure it's safe for everybody, get a stand for people there.
All right. I'm having flashbacks to high school.
We have a cafeteria that had an issue with one of the steamers, they scaled it and found a hole. So, huge problem with it, and so it needs to be replaced, so it's not an option, it's going to happen to speed on.
Okay.
$17,725, again, a bid not to exceed, is trying to get it out.
Installed?
Installed, yes.
Right, okay.
So that steam, what is the steam?
I wish I knew the exact detail of that, for sure. But I think it's for -- The steamer is replaced like deep fryers, or can be used in like a confection oven, it's used to kick, it's used to basically make the lunches, your vegetables, and stuff like that.
We have one more hole.
We have one more hole.
And this is at the middle school?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
And one last item would be, as we know, there's been some challenges with school being cleaned and maintained properly. So we're going all the details, this is from starts beginning at the year, and in September there was a letter sent out, and there was pain, October and November, there was payments withheld for the work that needed to be done. So where we stand right now is the, there's been some progress bestowed inside. We're supposed to have four people, we have three. And Alders is helping them fulfill that contract, at a cost, it's a fault, you know, the fault of paying Alders. But until March, Alders agreed to help to begin the market, there's been a challenge there. And they also indicated that there's been some hiring opportunities and whatnot, that they're trying to catch up with the process. And it was noted that some of this has been occurring because of the management, trying to remedy it, but we're in kindergarten, we're on that.
Yeah.
Maintenance people, they just hired one, so now they have three, they need four. Mr. Biggers' death has indicated that we're waiting on our maintenance. So there's a problem that's wrong with them.
Yeah.
Things may break, the scaling up the steamer, no, it should, again, it's not their problem, but it's all the light bells. So I'm actually recommending -- So, um, I'm going to, I'm actually recommending to the board that we put an RFP out for both, have them separated, okay? So, we have the option now to do whatever we want to do. And then, we decide as a board to continue on with Interstate, custodial side of it, with the maintenance side, but I recommend you begin RFP for both. Just, again, from my perspective, we all talked about this last year, the year before that, the year before that for GCA.
This contract is started, right? Isn't this the first year of the contract?
First year.
And they're, they're not performing, so you want to redo the process?
Very beginning has not really been.
Starting, like, you, you want, you, you're, you're asking for us to consider the possibility of, um, starting the process of bidding, bidding it separately, starting next school year?
Start the process, have we did a contract perhaps here?
Is that what you're looking for?
You want the contract, you want?
Okay, per the, um, the contract, we have an out of the contract for not performing. There's a performance bonded play, which plays, which will compensate us for whatever we need. What we're looking for is the board's okay to go out in RFP, not to accept the bid, but just to go out in RFP and get feelings out of what we have available to us, so we can make the proper recommendation whether to get rid of a company or back it short. So, all's we're looking for is an option, and can we go out in RFP to see what is out there in comparison to what we have?
Oh, I see.
And the board doesn't have to approve the RFP, that's, that's, it's just, will you give us the permission to?
I, I can say.
And it can start anytime.
But didn't we just do that? Don't we have an comparison from last summer? This isn't.
We have to redo it.
But we, we know what it is. Again, we, we want to perform with different services, not, not just.
There's, there's, there's different options, just to, just to explain it a little bit further. Um, you could, I've done this before in Rhode Island, is what we did was for the maintenance side, we went out for RFP for a separate plumber HVAC, and electrician, and maybe two general contractors, and then keep the custodial field shaped, or go out to bid and do it all together, or.
That's actually what we did, because, and a lot of us wanted to do that, but then there were some on the board that thought it was better putting it off again. So, I mean, we, we had that conversation.
And there's, there's options that we presented last year by RFPs, and the bids that came in from companies that do just that, and still may be an option for us, but we need, we need options when we look at this. It's not one. Now, between now and then, I don't know, maybe somewhere, I guess, it happens, but we have the option now.
What, six, six months they have to, they're going to report?
Since the beginning of, and some of, some of, some of.
Since the beginning of July?
Beginning of July.
Yeah, it's been, it's, it's beginning of July, it's actually.
Eight months.
So, again, we're speaking, we're running a meeting, we're facilitating a meeting tonight, making efforts to get all that, at the end of the day, for the contract, building, RFP, maintenance, those RFPs, or do share responsibility, means teachers, internal buildings, that we, we want to, want to.
Gentlemen here.
What can we do to improve that? It's not like hiring people, it's not like, it's, somehow it's going to be a hire fee.
Um, there's, um, again, I think once the RFPs come in, or the bids come in, we have to put, they have an RFP, and take that process at the beginning of the time.
Before we decide if we're going to, at least, no decision on whether we're going to, you know, put it out for bid, is going to be made tonight, we're going to decide whether or not it's going to be put on the, on the agenda for the voting meeting. But before we have that discussion, um, several of us were here during the facilities meeting, but some of us weren't, so we do have gentlemen here from Interstate, if you'd like to come up, just, just to, um, um, just tell us where you are from your side. I know I heard it already, but not everybody did.
David Leeds, Director of Educational Services for Interstate. So, kind of going back over what we spoke about about an hour earlier. We do understand the issues we're having with maintenance, not making excuses, just here to try to get us going in a better direction. We had a maintenance guy start today, we have another maintenance guy that we're waiting for child abuse. Fortunately, I can't force that to come in any faster, he had to take once in a while, but we will have four maintenance guys, hopefully by the end of this week. The other end of that is trying to hire a maintenance supervisor to come on. There is nothing in the contract that says we need five maintenance guys, but I want to bring on an additional guy to help Stephen out, to help us back to the point where we're not backlogged in work orders, the work orders are caught up, some of the PMS that we need to start doing are caught up as well. And then, once we get to that point where things are going in the right direction, that person would basically come in to fill a position where we're currently having issues. Custodial side, we're full on custodial. The agreement with Alters is, we're not paying them, they're Interstate's employees, we've hired them. Yeah, so it was, their guys would be laid off in the winter, so we basically came to an agreement, we would hire their individuals, so he didn't have to lay them off, and then they would be ready to go in the spring when it came time for grants. That whole process was basically a, we're going to hire people, and when we do, we're going to give you two, you've noticed, and you're going to let one of your employees know that they're no longer needed here at the site. That agreement, if you want to call it that, is up in March. We have six to seven people going through fingerprints, child abuse, all the stuff to be cleared to work here, which will backfill those positions. We've already filled up four of them that he was filling, and we just have a remaining six that we need to fill with. Uh, the issues with supervision at night, we are in the process of actually hiring an additional custodial supervisor. We understand there's a lack of supervision, a lack of guidance going on here in the evening, so I want to bring on an additional person that has some experience with school buildings to provide a little bit of extra supervision in the evening to help get custodial back to where it needs to be. So, that's kind of where we are right now.
Thank you, sir. So, all right, so, let me, was that the last item that you had to, to discuss from the meeting? Okay, so, my glasses are on my head. Okay. So, the items that I have written down that we would like to add to the voting meeting in two weeks is, um, the steamer, the inspections, the inspections for.
Not to exceed seventeen, seventeen.
Oh, yeah, not to exceed seventeen, seven twenty-five. Um, the inspections was like, what, three grand and something?
Three thousand and sixty-nine dollars.
Okay. And, um, the door replacement at the high school annex?
Three thousand, three hundred eighty-five dollars, they're all not to exceed.
Okay, and then, you would like us to vote on, on putting out?
I think we need to explore our options.
I hear you, but, so, um, let me explain for the rest of the board. We didn't have a full committee show up for that meeting, so if we, if we put these items on the agenda, they will be for us to, they would not be things that are coming out of committee with the, they're, they're not being forwarded out of committee with, with approval to go forward, they, you know, already, so they don't, they're just for us to decide to vote on at the next voting meeting. I just want everybody to understand the difference between the two, the two things. So, um, they're not being recommended out of committee, that's all, that's all, I just want to make sure everybody understands that. But I have no reason why we can't put all four of those on the, on the agenda, is that?
Next meeting.
Okay?
Next meeting for facilities is March ninth.
Is March ninth, and?
Yeah.
Six o'clock. And I wanted to correct something, it is correct in the agenda, but I said it wrong. Uh, the curriculum instruction committee is, their next meeting is the 24th of February, I said something else. Do you have any public comment on the facilities and transportation committee items discussed? We'll move on to finance. Uh, Mr. Miller?
Uh, yes, we, we had talked about the maintenance friends, as far as other items from the finance committee. We had a budget status update, as you're aware, there is another workshop scheduled for tomorrow, so that process is continuing, which is a budget workshop, there's tomorrow night. We also had a discussion on a behavioral specialist request, and feel like additional support is needed. Understand that it's currently contracted service, we're currently contracted for a hundred hours, and that, and we're going to look at seeing if additional hours are needed.
Okay.
And then, the, the other item that we did during the meeting is we reviewed the treasury package, and we were taking a look at it, and looking at the data and seeing if we'd like to reform that report. So, that's.
And, um, as you, as you've already said, we do have a budget workshop tomorrow at six, if anybody is looking for something to do. And, um, our next finance committee meeting is February 24th at 6:50. Any public comment on the finance report? Policy review? Mr., um, Mr. Scott is, could not, could not be with us today, so we had to, we had to cancel the meeting. So, the things that would have been discussed there will, will pretty much be staying the same. Did, Mr. Hurley, did you have any, anything pressing that we needed to talk about?
Yeah, there's something pressing. Obviously, we have second policies up for first reading, they're rather benign, crowdfunding, building security, emergency, emergency response, basically codifies some recent policy to light up the current rates, but he, um, so nothing real controversial.
Okay.
There's nothing for second reading this time?
No.
Because we're, we're the transition between committees from last time, so there's no second.
I apologize, sir.
Stephen said?
No.
I just want to deny, no, we asked him to say.
No. Why do you have to say? Um, no, um, so the next policymaking, the next policy committee meeting is March ninth at 6:50. Do we have any public comment on, on the policy meeting that never was? Technology committee, I believe we had one of those. Mr. Strobel?
Um, the IT, we looked at, discussed in preparation for our 2021 budget, an IT staffing support, technology grows, service requests, and service concern, response time, and the heat is in the middle school, obviously, 2011. Request will be in the budget perhaps here, and so, kind of keep up the rest of what we're talking about. Discussion and excavation paths, about the excavation, information path for, you know, using georectory tracking, so for about thirty days, back to, keep it up in front, just not getting some of the board, I think, things done, we have a great staff, we do some of the other manager, he'll think, like, to be able to do. There's also a discussion about communications specialists, try and help increase and better our communication from a public aspect, so they're exploring some different options.
Okay.
Nothing, we voted on the bid, um, they were just discussing. Um, there was also the need to move Skyward to cloud for security purposes, so that decision had been made inside the training office, and so it was, they moved to cloud, there's security issues of having, of a certain.
And there's nothing that we need to, they were just keeping us informed? There's nothing that we needed to talk?
We're going to actually get pricing on that, and going to contract on the next agenda.
Okay.
On the, um, the.
We have a meeting, yeah.
Yeah, the next, the next tech committee meeting on the 24th, we'll have one.
All right.
And we'll be able to share.
I thought we moved immediately.
Nope, that's fine.
Where are you thinking of moving it? Where are we at?
It's called IS Corp.
Which cloud is?
Amazon.
Is it this?
IS, is it Amazon?
IS Corp, I mean, Skyward is not, oh, their hosting thing is IS Corp, it comes into connection with Skyward. They did it at X, I don't know what exactly all the clients who.
The, 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 the most important parties for security.
I guess, they've sent some studies to the layer of security through the process, whereas our servers are here, and we're the only one apparently in the district that has our servers in the house.
And services.
So, it makes sense, that's about ten thousand dollars per year.
Tell them that it's in, it's in Amazon, or wherever it is, or wherever it is, if it's reporting, I guess, through the, the certified gates, and you stop to type to it, you should be able to act, to make sure that we're covered.
That makes me go home.
And we do, we will, the, um, the agenda has it listed as to be determined next meeting, but I, but I, I heard, I heard rumors two minutes ago that we're going to have a meeting on the 24th, is that correct?
That is correct.
It's going to be on the 24th.
At 5:00?
Yeah, I wasn't done, no. I'm always, I just.
You paused?
I paused, I had a safe order.
All right. Sorry.
Um, student information migration in the campus is, is starting to set up in February, good paper launched for August. Telcom updates, making good progress for Service Electric, looking for summer cutovers, local company, it's doing very well. Board docs, obviously, we're using it, expanding the opportunity in February, we're beyond ourselves, putting more documents on our boards. Digital learning, the professional development continues to have full day of training in January, and the teachers are working together for additional references for help that we'll provide, so it's going, again, very well.
Okay.
And then, the digital document platform setups are all complete, testing the system, the concept's been created, and the whole first frame launched by starting to hand out documents.
Okay.
Choosing.
All right, all right, thank you very much. Um, do we have any public comment on the technology committee report? Seeing none. Old business, we have just the, the minutes from last meeting. Any public comment on the meeting minutes? No, any board comment first? Any public comment? New business, I see nothing. And, uh, okay, so any presentations by the public on any other items not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none? Do we have a motion to adjourn? We're adjourned, thank you, everybody.